Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of January 10th, January 13th, and January 17th.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes. Having a problem with my mic here. Okay. Next, we have public comment regarding any pending resolutions. Okay, we will move on to our resolutions. Jeremy Sinco, sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Sorry, I don't have anything witty to start off like Dan usually does, so. One resolution for your consideration today, and that is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into agreement with Jones and Henry Engineers for design services to flow monitor the sanitary sewer trunk main along Wolf Creek in Sharon Township.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Next, we have Holly, and I think in for Holly is going to be Scott Miller.
Good morning. I've got one resolution for HR that I have six for finance. So, the first resolution has four rate increases, two in sanitary and two in JFS, one promotion in JFS, a return from leave and transit, and a resignation in the sanitary engineer's office. The first finance resolution is amending appropriations. This is an increase of appropriations. The second resolution is also amending appropriations to the transfer of appropriations. The third resolution are expenditure adjustments in various funds and accounts. The fourth resolution is authorizing cash transfers in various funds. The fifth resolution is allowing expenses of county officials. And the sixth resolution is authorizing the payment of bills in the amount of $2,183,631.87.
Move to approve the seven resolutions.
Second.
Any discussion?
Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have our department updates. First up is Shannon Ryan, our transit director.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'll start with the monthly report from December, wrapping up last year. Our numbers stayed pretty steady when it came to ridership. Maintaining costs have been a challenge with, as I mentioned, rising fuel costs and some increase in labor costs. But we ended up pretty well, pretty much what we thought, with considering those increases. Really trying to work through how, as we move into this year, and a lot of that's come from our strategic planning. I'm going to share a couple of updates. Our strategic planning began about a year ago from a lot of steering committee members, a lot of work. And in the short term, what we've been working on is Wadsworth pilot for the MC Flex. Some have heard this. I've been sharing a lot of this publicly, meetings at the Suprema Center, Wadsworth City Council, websites, Facebook, with the help of the commissioners newsletters, and the word is getting out. We're going to launch this pilot next Monday, the 30th. I have a flyer that I'll be handing out. I'm going to hand this down to the commissioners. It's been out for, you know, a time to show people how the system works. It works in two ways. One, you're going to get a call, or we're going to get a call from you to book your ride up to seven days in advance, minimum of two hours in advance, or there's going to be a mobile app for those that are techy. And we're going to talk a little bit about how to make everybody more comfortable with the app. Commissioner Hambley and I are working on, I'm working with him rather, to have digital literacy efforts to educate those so they feel very comfortable using the app. The goals of the service, and I'm just going to show a quick map, sorry for the prop, but I'm going to show something. This is the map of Wadsworth we're going to cover on our MC Flex. This is a wide area. As you can see, it covers much of the shopping, a lot of different residential areas that weren't originally covered. The goals of the service are to cut down service time, travel times for our clients to travel, our passengers to travel to their destinations. It's also really going to help us save miles and have, or non-revenue miles reduced, which is a strong indication that we'll be able to do more with the resources we have. So, this MC Flex begins, like I said, next Monday. We're already having folks book. It's going to be very popular. We've gotten a lot of good feedback from the mayor of Wadsworth, the city manager of Wadsworth, and most importantly, the passengers. They're excited about this launching. A lot of hard work's going into the marketing of it and talking, and I've been asked to speak at many different areas. But I just want to let everybody know I'll continue to bring up those updates on how we're doing this. Now, to wrap up the strategic planning, just a quick timeline. We have a draft of the final strategic plan. The steering committee has reviewed it, will review it. The final plan should be finalized around March 1st, and then we'll be sharing it to the board for final approval. And it's a good five-year, ten-year, five-to-ten-year plan for us to move forward into the short-term, long-term goals that we're going to have.
And if this is successful, do you see maybe going into other areas of the county that you'd like to try?
Great question. Yeah, this pilot will allow us to master our skills and collect data and make sure we can measurably handle the growth we're going to have, we believe we're going to have, and then it'll go to Medina. We have those resources in place, the maps in place, the ability to do this in Medina, and then finally in Brunswick. But it really is an Uber-like, and we've said that a couple of times, but it's a shared ride, public transit, that is relatively new to the industry. There's some other agencies going to be doing this. You're going to hear more about it. It provides a more personalized transportation, but I think it's greatly going to benefit Medina City and also Brunswick. It's going to catch on.
And the point is, it's a dollar fifty a trip, correct?
Very good. And, you know, where a trip is, and that's the data we're collecting. How many folks were once paying $4 to make that trip or going to be in a dollar and a half option now? Or the monthly pass, which is really beneficial to them. So, the dollar and a half in that whole area, that's exactly right, Stephen Colley. That's a good point. We're going to grow this. Once we make sure it works, a pilot is just that, to find out what we believe and a hypothesis is correct. We believe we're going to have some positive results from it. We've already had a lot of positive feedback.
Excellent.
Great.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Shannon.
All right. Thanks.
Okay, next, we have Debbie Kiley, our job as a family services director.
Good morning. First, I have four resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first is authorizing contracts for substitute care of children for JFS. The second is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from the JFS Children's Services 4E Fund to the JFS Public Assistance Fund. The third is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from the JFS Children's Services SCPA Fund to the JFS Public Assistance Fund. And the last one is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from the County General Fund to the Public Assistance Fund for the county's mandated share.
Move to approve the four resolutions.
Second.
Any discussion?
Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
And just some updates. Commissioner Harrison, I usually do them by division in the agency rather than the agency as a whole. I think to small chunks are, how do you eat an elephant, right? One bite at a time. So, public assistance, there are two major events happening with the signing of the Consolidated Appropriations Act. It was signed, I think, a few weeks ago. So, since early 2020, individuals that have been in receipt of SNAP benefits, food assistance benefits, they have been receiving two allotments based on the public health emergency that was authorized back then. They would receive their normal allotment the beginning of the month, and then usually towards the end of the month, they would receive an additional benefit. With the signing of that act, it's now prohibiting states from authorizing those additional emergency benefits. So, the last time families and households will receive that emergency benefit is February of 2023. I've reached out to, we've updated our website. I've reached out to different social media platforms. I talked to the Gazette just to blast as much information out there as we possibly could because this will represent a significant change for families in March and ongoing. Also part of that signing of that act, historically, since 2020, we have not been able to terminate individuals from their Medicaid rules, even if they were over income, failed to recertify annually like they are normally required to do. Part of that act says that states can now start terminating those individuals if they're indeed over income because the other prohibition was that you could call and say, and report your income, and even if you were over income, we pinned your case and left it alone. So, any individual that reported those changes, they stayed on unless they called and said, "I moved out of state and I want to remove off the rules." So, what we'll be doing now is looking at those that are past due for renewal, as well as those that are currently due, and then individuals newly applying, and be required to process those cases and also authorize those changes. So, we're not sure how many people will lose their benefits because this has been going on since 2020. So, people have been reporting their changes or not, but they've stayed on those Medicaid rules. So, this is going to be a significant amount of work for the division as we're taking care of all of these cases that have been backlogged. The state of Ohio has an initiative, it's a batch process, if you will, where it's going to go in and try and make these redeterminations on our behalf. But if any of those cases fall out because maybe the system can't make that determination, or if it's making a determination that they are indeed no longer eligible based on their income, the system won't close them. It will send those cases to the county offices throughout Ohio and will be required to make those determinations.
If an individual then would end up losing those benefits and wants to challenge it, what's the process there?
Yeah, they can request a state hearing. What will happen is there's a notice that's sent to them, letting them know that their benefits have been terminated. They can either contact the agency, contact the state of Ohio, or sign that form and send it back to us. And if they do that within 10 days, their benefits aren't terminated, they stay open until that hearing is held by the state of Ohio.
So, the state of Ohio does the hearing, not the local?
Correct.
Job and Family Service. So, they'll literally have to trans, they'll have to go to Columbus?
No, it will be done either virtually or over the phone.
Oh, okay. Good.
Yep. The agency still participates because we're required to submit testimony, but no one has to travel anywhere. Everybody can do it from their home. The converse of that, though, the SNAP benefits, there are no hearing rights because it's a federal law change. They cannot contest that.
Have there been communications with folks who are out of eligibility up to this point? That if this isn't extended, that you may lose your benefits?
Mm-hmm.
So, it's not going to catch, theoretically, it won't catch people completely by surprise?
Exactly. Great question. The state of Ohio has been sending communication letters to all recipients of both Medicaid and SNAP benefits, letting them know, especially from the SNAP program, that this is temporary. These additional benefits will not be reoccurring, even though they've been happening since 2020. The state of Ohio has sent them notices saying that effective March 1st, your benefit will only be that monthly allotment that you get the first week.
So, when will those notices go out?
They've already gone out.
From the state?
Yep.
So, the state has sent them out already?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, they sent them out last week, and kind of like a rolling amount, obviously, because there was a lot of people.
Right, because they're doing batch. Now, what's the timeframe for them to complete that redetermination? Do you?
For the Medicaid renewals?
Yeah.
What they've done is they have pushed out everybody's renewal to 2023. So, now, everybody has a renewal that's due in 2023 or January, February, and March of 2024. So, counties will have to do those redeterminations every month.
Okay, now, there is no clawback, though. In other words, they're not going to go back to individuals that sometime during that period of time they became not eligible and have been receiving benefits?
No.
Is that correct?
No, correct. Yes, 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 that's correct. No, they won't.
I just want to make sure. I'd make it clear at the public records that once they get the notice and no longer qualify, they're not in danger of having to pay anything to the state?
No.
For those services?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Clear.
All right, sure. Child protective, sadly, we remember, we remain having record numbers of children in care. We have 150 children right now, and for comparison, in January of last year, we were at only 84. Eighty-four is still a lot. One is too many, in my opinion, but we are still at 150. About 20 of those children are in treatment facilities for behavioral or mental health needs, and the balance remain in our foster homes, of which we have about 50 foster homes that are certified by Medina County, but there are other foster homes that exist in the system that are privately licensed. And child support, happy note, they were awarded best performance by the state of Ohio, and they won that over all other medium-sized counties. And I say medium because they're still really big counties. And within that data set, there's 21 counties. So, it was a significant competition, and they didn't even know that they were in contest for it. The state of Ohio just gave them an award. That award is based on several different measures by the state, establishing paternity, collecting the orders and creating those orders. So, it's all the work that comes into helping support those children that are separated from their parent or parents. So, my, obviously, congratulations to the child support staff, and I would be remiss if I did not include the sheriff's department, DR Court, and the clerk of courts and the prosecutor's office because they have been instrumental in that help.
Great.
So, those are my updates.
Great.
Questions?
All right.
Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Stacy Malika from our MCBDD board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Got a few handouts here for you. Top one first. I'm going to start off. We just completed our first year of our action plan, our three-year action plan. Here's a second handout. So, I just wanted to provide you with an update. Here's a summary of our accomplishments. I just want to highlight just a couple of things in each of the focus areas that we accomplished. In the focus area one, where we're really looking at the direct support professional crisis, one of the accomplishments is that we contracted with the Community Action Wayne, Medina Wayne County, for a success coach with the idea that, you know, there are opportunities to help people out there with childcare. Your car breaks down. It just sometimes is hard to have the time to actually look for those things. So, we're having a success coach go in free of charge of providers to be a resource for the DSPs. I also want to make note that we've been talking about the additional dollars for waiver reimbursement, and that has finally completed its process and been approved by legislators, and the initial payments have gone out to providers. And we are, this year, we will, as a board, contribute slightly more than half a million dollars to go to, out to the providers to assist with the DSPs and ensuring that they have some more resources to help them.
Well, that insistence, including, I know you had talked before that, you know, our hourly rate sometimes can be not competitive. Can you assist in that area with those funds?
It's technically no.
Okay.
Because that is set by the state, but this is a supplement.
Okay.
A retention, if you will. That's how they're, you know, identifying it. And it's based on the amount of units that the providers have billed for actual services. And again, this is kind of a bridge. You know, right now, the state Department of DDD is looking at redesigning that waiver, and, you know, what do those rates look like? How do they make them competitive? And at the same time, you know, our organization is working with state legislators and advocating for rate increases because that just hasn't been the norm for so long.
Do you know whether the governor's going to be including any of these anticipated changes in his budget at the end of the month?
That's what we're hoping for. We've been working hard, and we anticipate that there's going to be an increase. And the county boards as a whole statewide have also said, "Hey, we are going to bring some additional matching dollars to, you know, again, and get more money out to the people that are doing the work and to really make sure that people have a living wage." And, you know, it's tricky because you've got to, it's Medicaid rule, and you've got to walk that fine line. But, yeah, we have some traction, and we're going to keep working.
Good.
Yeah. In the area two, where we're looking at transitions, I want to point out that we are, this past year, we've worked with four local school districts, and we've gone out to provide advocacy, education, and training. And that second hand, oh, no, I'm sorry. That's the third hand, the third area. You know, there is a lot of value in providing education to people, students with developed mental disabilities, about, you know, what does it mean to advocate for yourself? You know, how do you do it? What's important to you? You know, getting out there and letting people know what your goals are and how to achieve that. And so, we've had great success with this. The schools have been very receptive, and they are asking for more. So, we're excited. You know, that's where it all starts. And in our third focus area, we talk about, you know, community inclusion, and that's that second handout, the committed inclusion. And we've, you know, identified four new organizations, businesses that we can work with this project. We've created this webpage. It's a copy of the webpage that you'll find on our site. And again, it's building that knowledge out there for businesses and organizations that this is a group of people that, A, want to be more included, and how do you ensure that their facilities are accessible to people? And what does that look like and the value of that? So, we're, I'm particularly excited about this as we move ahead. And again, this year-end summary is on our webpage, but gives you an idea of a lot of the good stuff that we're doing. The final thing, I wanted to give you an update about the state performance audit. So, we are at that end, and what we're looking at is the state audit team. I'd like to have them give a presentation of the audit to both the commissioners and the budget commission.
That'd be great.
That'd be great.
We're looking at, and I will send some emails out, but right now, we're tentatively looking at, like, possibly February 21st or 22nd. We can do that virtual, so it makes it more accessible. If you would prefer that they come, we can do that, too. They're open to that.
Sure.
But, yeah, so, we're very, you know, we're at the end.
Good, good. Now, you'll be inviting also the auditor-elect?
Yes, we'll invite the auditor-elect. Certainly make sure that, Scott, that you also attend. And so, that'll be an opportunity to-
Was it an interesting process?
It was. It was. It was, and it was a very positive process working with the state auditors. It was, they've kept us in the loop. They've presented. They've asked questions. We've asked questions. And so, I think that it, what they're looking at gives a nice picture, so.
This is the first performance audit of a DD?
Yeah.
Board in the state since, I think, like, two decades, and last time it was about copying costs. Finding the cheapest way. That was, it was very, very narrow. This is the first broad one.
We are, and I certainly have been sharing that with my association, and it's brought up some good discussions. I mean, you know, the Department of DoDD has been involved, you know, so there's, you know, with our cost reports. There's going to be, I think, some good information coming out.
Great.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Stacy.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Okay, next, we have public comment. Does anybody have any public comments? Okay, moving on, discussion session. Scott?
Yeah, I just want to give you a quick update. So, the courthouse, everybody has moved. We are down to doing the punch lists and completing the AV in the courtrooms. So, hopefully, by the end of the week, the judges will be able to use all the courtrooms. And with that said, 72, the second floor of 72 is now empty except for Congressman Miller. So, we had talked about moving mediation over to 72 Public Square. And then, we've got 4046 Medina Road is, I know that our maintenance department is working with contractors, painters, and carpeting companies to go in and to renovate that, and we'll be doing some other work ourselves.
Do we have an estimate on that one? Okay.
Yeah. So, hopefully, that'll be done first quarter, maybe? So, once that is done, OSU can then move out to 4046. Again, we can move mediation anytime. I know Ian has asked to stay in 70, in the professional building as long as possible so that that move can be, you know, first quarter or even second quarter. But once that's done, then we have an empty building. So, I would say probably sometime in the second quarter of 2023, you'll be able to dispose of the building in some fashion if you so wish. The other thing is I have been in contact with Mayor Hanwell. I'm looking for a copy of the lease agreement with the city's provisions. I've not received it yet, but I'm sure I'll probably get it sometime in the near future. Once I do, I will make sure that you each get a copy of it to get your input. I'll also sit down with Tom Karas and go through with him. I know that I think Judge Hudson has also been working on it, so I expect it's going to be similar to what we've talked about in the past. The other thing is I just, I sent the ARPA information out for, to be reported on, so that's completed. I will be meeting with Mike Lyons. I have a call in to him to meet with him probably tomorrow afternoon, if possible, to discuss the agreements that he currently has. And I'll look at the list and determine if there are what other agreements we might need. So, that's just a quick update.
I wanted to bring up the discussion regarding the, and I shared with everybody, comments back and forth with the mayor regarding the flags and banners policy they're trying to establish for the Uptown Square, for the square itself. And his comment that he sent us a copy of their lease for that, that he, I assume he was thinking that that would apply also to the 69 courthouse discussions. And just want to make it as a matter of record that we ought to stay consistent with the square, with the complex, the court complex has to be under the county and under the county commissioners and the courts and not subject to the ordinances or the policies of Medina City Council. They can establish what they want on that leased property, but I think when it comes, if we do enter an agreement with the 69 courthouse, it'd be clear that that still falls under the county functions and courthouse functions.
I would agree. So, is that something you think needs to be added?
We need to make sure it's included in there, and communicate that to him, and I think it just ought to be clear. It is a complex that is connected. Anybody walking into the Medina Munich Court or anybody seeing a banner or flag will, it really ought to be consistent with our county policies and under the commissioners and the courts. The last thing you need to do is put banners up that might diminish the neutral standing of the justice system. Somebody going in there and seeing a banner or something that's counter to their beliefs or their, it's supposed to be a neutral territory. And I think having state flags and a, obviously, our federal flag is consistent with that. But putting banners and other things up there that are, whatever the city does, it wants to do, that's fine. But when it comes to the county, we have to make sure that we maintain the integrity of the court system and the county.
Okay. Yep, I wrote it down.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Anything else?
I just want to add, as the person up here who's had the least to do with the construction over there and having spent some time over there, the judges, the magistrates, all the personnel I've talked to over there seem thrilled with, you know, even the hiccups in the final steps of getting things up to date, but just everybody, you know, fantastic job because I think it's, you know, it is going to be a nice centerpiece for the court operations over there. Both practitioner-
Which is kudos to Scott and Stephen.
Oh, yeah.
Definitely.
Definitely.
So, everybody who was involved with that, really, really well done. And I don't even think, I'm going to speak for people over there, I guess, but the interruptions from the moves haven't been as troubling as I think some people were concerned they would be. So, well done, everybody.
Well, thank you.
Great.
Debbie, do you have anything else? Shannon?
I don't know if we're talking about next week, but I'll be bringing in a resolution to buy some buses and increasing costs are causing us to go back to the FDA for some more dollars. So, that's the next one.
Stacy, anything else?
Yeah.
Jeremy?
I have nothing.
Wow.
Really? Okay.
Sarah, Steven?
With the fear is people are going to think you're like the same person now. Look at them.
Should I just ask for a ton of money then, just to ask for it now? So, I have a few proposals from the ARPA agreements for Gardner to move forward with a jobs and family services rooftop unit, Farm and Soil Administration's rooftop units, although they sit on the ground, and for the juvenile detention centers rooftop units. With that, Farm and Soil Administration came in at $76,510, which is about $15,000 less than what we had planned for. Juvenile detention centers came in at $235,234, which is about $76,000 less than the estimated costs. However, jobs and family services came in at $428, which is about $138,000 more than what was expected. That rooftop unit is a, while it's not a specialized unit, it is harder to get and more expensive for some reason that it had a huge increase in price over this last year. for some reason that it had a huge increase in price over this last year. So the overall, we'd be looking at about a $47,000 increase. This also has contingencies built into these prices, so if we don't use the contingencies, we're about even in that. But if we have to use the contingencies, we will be above what we had thought, so.
But these are funds and these were projects we had already approved.
These are?
Right.
Projects that we had already approved. Obviously, there's this additional $47,000 increase that could possibly happen. So I was just wanting to know if you guys wanted me to move forward with those?
Correct. Yeah.
Did you have some access? Now, I'm trying to understand the increased cost in, in that one. Is that to do with the materials? Just a specific vendor?
I think it's to do with the actual rooftop style of how large it is and the cost impacts there. The units at Farm and Soil Administration and the juvenile detention center, as long as with the ones we put in on the engineer center, are all a smaller unit.
Right, got it.
Seven and a half, 10-ton units. I do believe this is a 90-ton RTU, so it's a much larger...
So it's a much larger, okay, got it.
So, and I don't know if manufacturers across the board had that same problem.
Got it, okay, all right.
These units have a 50-some-week lead time in them, 52-week lead time.
Wow.
They're massive. I don't know, and I don't know what distinguished why this one would be so much more money than others. Engineers, when we installed those, they were about a 16-week lead time. So I don't know why there's a huge difference in it from a manufacturing standpoint, whether it's technology that's getting put in or...
Okay.
So I don't have a good answer for that one.
Okay, I was just curious, but yeah, since we have it, let's certainly put that additional in as we need.
Then I'll bring that on resolution next week. Okay. And then just to also update on the courthouse, the survey marker for the time capsule is, has arrived. So that should be getting installed as well. And then, I know Scott mentioned, 1841 is now completely moved out and demo has started. So they started protecting the woodwork in there now, and they will be removing the temporary heatings going in now, and then the boiler will be coming out this week.
So like all their benches and everything like that and furniture, everything has been moved?
Furniture's all been moved. Scott, I need to discuss the benches that were donated from Ambrose Church, St. Ambrose. So those are still in there.
Okay.
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 Super.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not.
Steve?
Nope.
All right. I do not either.
Okay. Want to make a motion and go to executive session for the purpose pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section 121.22G6 to discuss details of proposed security arrangements and emergency response protocols planned for the county's information technology systems. In other words, the networking of computers, electronic devices, email and telephone systems, et cetera, disclosure of which would jeopardize the security of county offices, and also to consider the compensation and employment of a public employee.
Second.
Roll.
Hamley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes. So we will be going off-camera to go in an executive session. We will be back at 10:30 for an annexation hearing. So thank you very much.
But we'll no longer be live, correct?
We'll no longer be live.